The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, April 10th, 2018 is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Councilman Mark Kandaray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you President Morton. Heavenly Father, be come here tonight to do the work of St. Joseph County. Please bless us as we deliberate, help us to make wise decisions for the better of all in our county. We also, I would like to take a moment to thank all the military officers, the men and women of the military that protect us here and abroad, and pray for those who are in other countries that are such as Syria and other places where they are being afflicted by terrorism internally, and for those who are victims of terrorism internationally. I also want to take a moment to thank the local law enforcement officers that keep us safe from pollution every day that women and men in law enforcement. I especially want to thank Officer Shapoot, South Bend Police, and Jim Denon, who unfortunately were forced to make some tough decisions last week and had to use lethal force. I appreciate all that they do to keep us safe, keep our streets safe, keep our homes safe, and all the law enforcement officers in our county. Please be with them and their families as they get to the zip of all time, and be with the families of the victims who also had lethal force used on them. I ask that all these favors in the name of our, my Savior Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Councilman Kandaray. Next on the agenda are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Ms. Hess?
Uh, sorry, sir. We have a reappointment, a motion for a reappointment to Jerry J. Marley to the Water Resources Advisory Board.
Second. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing of nominations on our close. A second to that motion was made by Ms. Kandaray. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Jerry Marley has been reappointed to the Water Resources Advisory Board. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 13th public hearing? Do I hear a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. The minutes from the March 13th, 2018, public hearing are approved. Next on the agenda, report from the county auditor.
I have the.
Thank you sir. For the county commissioners, Ms. Costelny.
My name is Annie Costelny, President of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners, office on the seventh floor of this building. President Morton, esteemed members of council, fellow citizens of St. Joseph County, honored to talk tonight about the great work that's been done over the last year here in St. Joseph County. And we've just got a great group of dedicated public servants throughout all of our departments and county government. We make great strides towards accomplishing our vision to develop a region that builds quality of life through economic growth and safe living, and embracing our values of efficiency, transparency, and responsibility, and by living our mission of efficiently providing public services that build strong and sustainable communities. This year, thirty-three departments submitted reports, and I'd like to thank each of them for these submissions, and for all they do each day for the residents of St. Joseph County. I'd like to spend a few minutes now kind of highlighting some of their many accomplishments. The Department of Adult Probation has been working on reducing recidivism rates through the continued development of a pre-trial services division. St. Joseph County is part of a ten-county pilot program in Indiana, working toward pre-trial reform to help with these efforts, and our partners received a grant of over three-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. Archives received twelve-hundred-and-fifteen boxes, the third highest amount ever. They continue to work with the volunteers from the South Bend Area Genealogical Society on indexing several databases. The Area Plan Commission prepared for assuming the administrative duties of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals and zoning administration from the Building Department. As of January 1st of this year, Area Plan has assumed all those responsibilities for the county. The Office of the Assessor completed the fourth cycle of reassessment of approximately thirty thousand residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural persons. They processed over thirty-seven hundred appeals and completed a review of assessment of over eleven thousand business personal property accounts. The Office has extended hours to meet with taxpayers in the evenings to review assessments. They've also expanded online services to include sales information, neighborhood maps, ownership, and tax information. The Office of the Auditor worked on to increase transparency by including a variety of financial and budget reports on the county website. They're also working to create new financial reports for the council, commissioners, and the website. This year, they will be critical in working on the selection of Enterprise Resource Planning System and plan to improve and revamp budget procedures to provide additional information for council and commissioners. The Clerk completed a successful implementation of e-filing in both Circuit and Superior Courts. Beginning in May of 2017, e-filing in probate court began in October. Twenty-two thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-three new court cases were filed electronically, totaling thirty-eight thousand one-hundred-and-sixty-three in Circuit and Superior Courts. The Community Corrections Advisory Board helped oversee the implementation of a pilot felony pre-trial diversion program in coordination with the Adult Probation and the prosecutor. The Office of the Coroner responded to five-hundred-and-ten calls and have worked to significantly reduce costs. Autopsies now cost fourteen hundred dollars less. Transport of bodies is four-hundred-and-fifty dollars less, and morgue storage is now available at no cost to the county. The previous cost was fifteen hundred dollars per day. The Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau provided services to one-hundred-and-forty-four families involving two-hundred-and-fifty-six children. They registered and tracked the completion of court-ordered basic divorce education and co-parented classes for eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-four parties. The Ducom Center provided GPS monitoring for individuals in the felony pre-trial pilot program due to sentencing changes at the state level, more and more clients are being ordered into the Community Corrections Program. The Department of Economic Development spent 2017 setting the table for future economic development with a primary focus on advancements in the New Carlisle area. Four-hundred-and-eighty-six commercial construction building permits were issued in the county, equalling three-hundred-and-twenty-four million dollars of new capital investment. This is an increase of over one-point-seven percent from 2016. The EMA took over the county grants department. Through 2017, the agency applied for forty-four different state and federal grants. The Office hosted a statewide exercise collaboration with five different districts and the Director of Homeland Security. The Department of GIS completed the mapping for the 911 dispatch center. They set up over forty different map layers for dispatchers to use when a resident calls 911. The Department also maintains thirty-six department layouts and one-hundred-and-thirty-seven layers for maps used by all departments across the county and the city. Health Services Division implemented twelve health programs, including sampling and monitoring drinking well, water wells in Granger. The Foods Division conducted twenty-one hundred inspections and brought in almost two-hundred-thousand dollars in food permit revenues. They inspected, sorry, they issued two-hundred-and-seventeen new permits, and Health Education Division completed nine-hundred-and-seventy-three presentations of programs educating nearly thirteen thousand residents. This division also accepted an agreement with the South Bend Community School Corporation to provide health education according to state standards for all primary centers in the area. The Federal Records Division issued fifteen thousand seventy-six birth certificates and unfortunately seventeen thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-two death certificates. The Department of Human Resources was changed at the beginning of 2018, and a new interim director was named. She immediately wrote the department's mission statement to provide knowledge, counsel, and services to help St. Joseph County attract, develop, and retain a talented workforce. We'll hear more about that in a little bit. IT completed the implementation of both VoIP Cisco phones and full client installations of Office 365 to all county employees, as well as continuing the tech refresh program. The JJC has reduced juvenile commitments to the Indiana Department of Corrections by fifty-one percent since 2013. They've also reduced admissions to the JJC by twenty-five percent during this time, and have lowered their daily population in detention by thirty-seven percent. Maintenance has assumed responsibility for upkeep of additional facilities, including the JJC. They've sold an updated panic button security system in the county city building and surrounding court buildings. The maintenance staff worked with performance services, as well as many members of council in the auditor's office, to identify and coordinate the energy-saving upgrades for the county facilities. Department of Museums reported that nearly fifty thousand individuals visited their museum exhibits, toured the historic houses, and participated in his school and public programs. History Museum has over seven-hundred member households and welcomed almost fifty-five-hundred students. Parks and Recreation benefits the community, public health, and economic development by managing over thirteen-hundred acres of public access green space, river and stream corridors, wetlands and woods. Last year, they welcomed over three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand visitors to their different events. Portage Manor worked to decrease operating budget by three-hundred-thousand dollars last year, averaging occupancy of one-hundred-and-thirty-three patients. They also organized a 501(c)(3) charity called Friends of Portage Manor, Inc., to help with fundraising efforts in light of anticipated budget shortfalls. Department of Procurement, artist formerly known as Purchasing, spent much of 2017 working with fifty county employees from twenty departments to document and outline current financial accounts payable and human capital tracking processes as preparation for the selection of the ERP system. The department also started a surplus auction to gain revenue from item assets declared obsolete but had not yet reached the end of their useful life. Both were accomplished while still performing the business of processing purchase orders at an average rate of seventy per day. Prosecuting Attorney filed over sixteen-hundred misdemeanor and over fifty-three-hundred felony charges, held offenders accountable, and secured convictions such as a hundred-and-thirty-year sentence in a cold case murder. The Child Support Division exceeded state and national averages and collected over twenty-seven-point-five million dollars for local families. 2018 will see the Office continue to aggressively embrace solutions for combating the opioid epidemic through their work with law enforcement and community partners. Public Safety Communication Consortium fully consolidated its computer-aided dispatch center system, I'm sorry. The center received over four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand calls in 2017, a decrease of fifty thousand from the year before. The PSAP Center is pleased to report that as of December, seventy-two percent of employees are fully cross-trained, which is up from thirty-one percent just four months prior. Public Defender has twenty-one felony deputies who handle sixteen-hundred-and-eighty-two cases, an increase of ninety-eight from the previous year. At the JJC, Public Defenders handle in excess of six-hundred-and-fifty cases. The department also handled twenty-one-hundred-and-eighty misdemeanor cases. This reimbursement was approximately eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. Public Works completed over forty-two million dollars in community investment in the road and bridge program, and improved approximately one-hundred-and-eighty-eight centerline miles of roads throughout the county. Major projects include receiving a million dollars of community crossings, matching grant program funding to rehabilitate Pierce Road, and six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars from the same grant to be used for local public paving. They completed the McKinley Highway and Ash Road intersection improvement in partnership with Elkhart County, and the Olive Sample Street Bridge Rehabilitation in partnership with the city's South Bend. The Fur and Brick Road roundabout improvement and the LaSalle Trail Extension Phase Two. In 2018, the department will work on several other major road projects, most significantly the Cleveland Corridor project just to the west of 933. The Recorder recorded forty-one thousand documents. The Office added another layer of cybersecurity to its recording software so that in the event of a local natural disaster or malware, the county would not suffer a loss of recorded data or financial information. The Sheriff Department services forty percent of the population of St. Joseph County and is responsible for patrolling eighty-five percent of the county's overall land area. The department has one-hundred-and-sixteen sworn officers, seventy-three of whom are assigned to road patrol. The Jail Division booked nine, over nine thousand inmates in 2017. Thankfully, none of them were named Hammond or Costelny. For an average daily population of six-hundred-and-twenty-seven, they received over one-point-two million dollars in reimbursement for housing federal inmates, and over one million dollars from the Indiana Department of Corrections for housing state inmates. Civil Division conducted five-hundred-and-two mortgages for mortgage foreclosure sales and over eighteen-hundred evictions and repossession. The Warf Division received almost ten thousand warrants from the courts. The Sheriff Department was dispatched on forty-four thousand calls, and the police investigative services completed over fifty-one-hundred case reports. The county and the University of Notre Dame have reached an exciting agreement to move the cyber crimes unit to the campus of Notre Dame. This will make it one of eight units nationally that uses a hybrid approach to law enforcement working with academic institutions, as well as a prosecuting attorney's office. Soil, Water, and Conservation completed its second year of a multi-county Clean Water Indiana Grant Project. They planted forty, four-hundred-and-thirty-five acres of cover crops to help improve soil health and participated in two-hundred-and-forty school programs. Superior Court reported that almost thirty-one thousand new cases were filed. Fifty-two hundred residents appeared for jury service in one-hundred-and-twenty-eight jury trials. They also established a Title IV D Court to deal with the establishment of paternity and collection of child support when the prosecutor has appeared on behalf of the children. Under the coordination of Judge Hostettler, state and federal judges gathered at the statue of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Father Theodore Hesburgh in downtown South Bend in September to reaffirm the commitment of our courts to equal justice for all. It's also great that Judge Ambler was able to be in that picture, so we'll always get this to remember him by. The Office of the Treasurer collected two-hundred-and-sixty-eight million dollars in taxes last year, an increase of seven-point-six million dollars. The total amount of money held in investment was eighty-seven-point-two million, an increase of two-point-two million from the year before. These investments earned nearly two million in interest. 2017 was the second year the Office offered e-billing in lieu of mailing out tax bills. Thirty-three-hundred-and-eighty-five residents have signed up for that, an increase of over thirteen hundred from the year before. Voter Registration updated over sixteen thousand voter records through voter registration applications. Through the federally and state mandated voter list maintenance program, the Office also made almost ten-thousand dollar, ten-thousand records inactive. Lastly, weights and measures through the help of MACOC purchased a three-quarter-ton pickup truck with an insert for testing fuel meters at fueling centers. Under the leadership of Commissioner Fleming, the county began holding monthly meetings, or continued actually holding monthly meetings with different departments under the commissioner's umbrella. This group drafted vision, mission, and core value statements to help shape the proper direction for our county. They worked to develop a three-year strategic growth model and identified key projects that could be started in the first year. I'm pleased to say we are well on our way to accomplishing these goals. Starting at the bottom-left quadrant is a goal of having safe, efficient communities. This begins by bringing efficiency within county government. The Department of Procurement, under the direction of Bree Roberts, has been leading the efforts to navigate the ERP project from charting the various department processes to drafting the RFP, to leading the selection committee through the elevation to demonstration phase, and eventually later this year, hopefully, bring before council and board of commissioners a funding proposal. Over fifty county employees have put countless hours into this project from twenty different departments. This system will help streamline all facets of day-to-day activities. Ultimately, fourteen vendors were submitted, have submitted proposals, and the selection committee spent weeks poring over the proposals, narrowing the finalists down to three. Crow Horwath will demonstrate their system from May 1st to the 3rd, Tyler Technologies from May 21st to 23rd, and Infor Public Sector will demonstrate from May 30th through June 1st. All demonstrations will be available from 9 to 4. I strongly encourage all members of council to come to the demonstrations to witness how significant these systems would be for all county departments. I think we'll look back at this in a number of years and wonder how we ever conducted business here in the county without these resources. The Department of Information Technology has also been working tirelessly under the direction of Scott Seth to implement several new IT initiatives. They have been working with the courts to help automate the jury questionnaire system and have been working at the jail to implement a new jail management system. They're also bringing Office 365 training tools and libraries to all employees. This alone has increased productivity, as employees can now access work product from their mobile and home devices, along with state-of-the-art software. Most importantly, under the guidance of Auditor Hammond and Councilman Corey Nolan, the county will be moving to a formalized system of IT governments, governance with a reconfigured data board. The county will be better able to assess long-term IT needs and move away from a system based on the tyranny of the moment. And thankfully, because Mr. Nolan was last to appear at the meeting, he's also received a lifetime appointment as a president of that body.
Still a repeat.
By embracing these technological advances, we can bring increased efficiency and productivity to our employees, and through that, provide a better level of service to our citizens. The next quadrant is the goal of Lead County Vision. This refers to the county government leading by example and representing the type of community where our residents are proud to call home. Projecting a strong brand for St. Joseph County is important for economic development and for fostering a sense of community among citizens. We do great work, but have struggled with communicating this to our citizens. This simply needs to end. A new county logo representing our natural resources by combining green, which symbolizes growth, and our great parks system, and the letters FJC being formed from a script reminiscent of a river and forward momentum. The C for County falls in the center of the logo because our county should strive to be the epicenter for our region, a safe place to live and work with a rich heritage of traditions and a strong cultural scene, perfect for raising a family, conducting a business, or receiving a world-class education. Also want to thank the work of Bill Shalio and Auditor Hammond, who helped kind of coordinate our logo process. Throughout the first half of 2018, this logo will be integrated into several new branding components. New courthouse wayfinding signage was recently installed, and new signs will soon be going up in the county city building. These signs will help make it easier for citizens to navigate the various county departments and quickly find the offices that they need. We are currently rolling out the final products of this branding initiative. Soon, all departments will be utilizing new envelopes, business cards, letterhead, and email signatures. We've also been working on increasing our web presence. More and more departments are taking advantage of our website, FJCIndiana.com. This January, over forty employees went through a week-long training on posting documents, creating forms, and using our website to its fullest potential. It's a great tool for our residents to apply for permits, view budget information, and interact with county departments. We simply want to make it easier for our citizens to do business and to communicate with us in the county. In January, we added a report, we had a report of concern feature on the homepage. I will note, this is not a pothole from St. Joe County, so that's, we have plenty of them, but this is not one of ours. Citizens can use this feature to report anything, from a road concern to a customer service concern. These requests are immediately forwarded to the appropriate department who can address the issue. In the first three months, we've received sixty requests through this portal. I'm confident this is just the beginning, as more and more people become familiar with how easy it is to communicate with their local government. This also gives us a way to track these things to make sure they've been addressed as they go through the system. Last week, we launched a Facebook and LinkedIn page, as well as Twitter and Instagram accounts. We continue our partnership with WNIT Public Access to record and broadcast commissioner and council meetings. The videos are posted to our YouTube page and to the county website, so no longer if traveling to the county city building, a barrier for citizens who want to be informed of the inner workings of county government and the meetings of the folks that represent them. They can watch the meetings in the comfort of their own home and interact with their government from the convenience of their smartphones. They will be able to keep up day-to-date with upcoming deadlines, engage with other citizens, stay informed of the latest news from our government, and communicate with us more effectively. Through the new branding, the website, and social media presence, we are beginning to reshape how the county conducts the business of the people. These tools will allow us to market our community, to attract new business, and by providing excellent customer service to our citizens, will help better retain those already calling St. Joseph County home. Another quality of life issue that we continually look to improve upon is our leaf pickup program. With the leadership of Councilman Robert Kozinski and Auditor Hammond, we listened to the feedback from our constituents and modified the leaf program, allocating resource to where they were most needed. We've also released a new RFP for leaf pickup that will hopefully provide greater flexibility and continued improvements to the process. The next quadrant represents sustainable economic growth. The Department of Economic Development, under the direction of Bill Shalio, have been working on several major initiatives to accomplish the goal of fostering strong economic growth. Phase one of the St. Joseph Energy Center became operational March of this year. The department is currently working with four prospects for new projects in the New Carlisle Industrial Area and anticipates working with the St. Joseph Energy Center team to move forward with the Phase Two of their project. We initiated Project One Ring, a master planning effort for this area. The seven consultant planning study will not only assist in creating a master plan for the northwest part of the county, but will also serve as a framework for site certifying several hundred acres of property through the Inokra Site Certification Process, making us even more attractive to development. So companies can come and look and say the sites are certified and ready to go. That's one less hurdle that they have to clear. We've already begun seeing the positive impact of these efforts. Brought petition for a new concrete batch plant in the area, which indicates the private sector has noticed that future construction opportunities are on the horizon. Another focus involves the Capitol Avenue Economic Development Area. Originally created to support the AM General Commercial Division, recently SF Motors, based out of China with the U.S. office in Santa Clara, California, bought the commercial division from AM, of AM General. The department has been working with the new ownership team on the transition and planning for reuse of the site. Bill was on hand in California when SF Motors unveiled the electric vehicle that will be built in the Mishawaka plant that could really open up incredible new avenues to St. Joseph County. We're continuing to explore the economic viability of State Road 933, which is one of the most underdeveloped corridors in the entire county. To better serve this area, Parks and Public Works sought funding to complete the LaSalle Trail to the Indiana-Michigan State Line. This funding was in large part approved by council, thank you very much, from the Hotel Motel Tax Tourism Fund. Last year, the county committed over eighteen million dollars to the South Shore Double Track Project, continuing our commitment to bring ninety-minute service from Chicago. We are working with South Bend and Nittany to locate a station with maximum economic impact and minimum residential impact. Most significantly, the Department of Economic Development is tasked with reorganizing all aspects of the building process, leading to restructuring of all areas that touch commercial and residential construction and development. This will help companies and individuals more efficiently navigate the development process to make permitting and plan reviews more streamlined and expedited. This has been a tremendous area of opportunity for the county in the last several years, and we're finally able to dedicate the resources to make this happen. The final quadrant represents exceptional customer service. This not only means great service to our residents, but great service to our internal customers at different departments of the county. When our employees feel valued and work in a positive environment that embraces technology to make their task easier and more efficient, they'll be better able to provide a high level of service to the public and to other departments. After better technology, I'm sorry, aside from better technology, the surveying different county departments, the greatest area of opportunity was in our HR department. So, beginning in January of this year, Kim Karkevitz was named the interim director of Human Resources. She and her team are working on establishing a customer-focused environment to become more clearly connected to support the departments and employees alike. They seek to build the reputation of St. Joseph County as a great place to work by transforming the human resource system. Human Resources focused on four initiatives, or will be focusing on four initiatives in 2018. The first is employee attraction. Job postings have been revamped to highlight the benefits of working for St. Joseph County. While our pay is not always as rich as other opportunities, our benefits are extremely rich. We want to try and point out the great things that we have to offer here in St. Joe County from employment standpoint. They're also reworking job descriptions, the hiring process, and centralizing orientation. Departments are finding it difficult to recruit and keep talented professionals, so we're going to try and help with that. The second initiative focuses on employee retention. HR is working with individual departments to update organizational charts, revise position descriptions, define training requirements, and identify county-wide training programs to improve service. The third initiative focuses on internal communications. Kim is meeting with department heads to discuss the individual needs of their department. Last month, she sent out the first monthly HR newsletter and is working to put various HR toolkits on the county website. Lastly, the department is focused on improving safety and updating existing policies. She's formed a safety compliance committee, will be looking to update the employee policy manual, and extend HR best practices across all departments. I'm also happy to report that effective at our Tuesday meeting next week, Kim is going to be named the permanent director of HR for St. Joseph County. With all the wonderful things we've accomplished in 2017, we know the full impacts of the circuit breakers loom. We need to continue the hard work of tightening our belts to continue to deliver the essential services our citizens expect at our current funding levels. The good news is that our past efforts have been successful. We've done a lot of work from the commissioner and from all our county departments in really being very budget-conscious. St. Joe County continues to be in a strong financial position. We have a double-A bond rating from S&amp;P. At the start of 2018, we had cash reserves of over eighteen-and-a-half million dollars in the general fund and six million dollars in ceded. St. Joseph County had a total net cash balance of over seventy-four million dollars, which is more than double that of South Bend and almost twelve times that of Mishawaka. There is indeed light at the end of the tunnel. This past year has brought about quite a few changes at the county level. Departments are adapting and are excited about the new direction we are taking to embrace technology. As elected officials, it is our responsibility to support our employees and provide, to provide essential services to our community on a daily basis. The state of our county is strong, and we will grow even stronger as long as we continue to work together. to work together. I'd like to thank Frank Rotia for helping kind of put a lot of this together, but once again, it's my pleasure to spend a few minutes talking about the wonderful accomplishments here in St. Joe County. I thank you for your service and all you do to make our county a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions from council or Commissioner Shalio?
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, report from council special committees. Any council special committees? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, first reading. Clerk, will you please read bill number twenty-four eighteen?
Bill twenty-four eighteen. An ordinance amending and supplementing title fifteen land usage, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning, the St. Joseph County Code as amended for properties located at one three three eight eight State Road twenty-three, from C Commercial District to C Commercial District, Petitioners Mutual Bank.
Bill number twenty-four eighteen is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number twenty-five eighteen?
Bill twenty-five eighteen. Ordinance amending and supplementing title fifteen land usage, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning, the St. Joseph County Code as amended for properties located at one three zero zero one State Road twenty-three, from C Commercial District to C Commercial District, Petitioners Mutual Bank.
Bill number twenty-five eighteen is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Clerk, will you please read bill number twenty-six eighteen?
Bill number twenty-six eighteen. An ordinance amending and supplementing title fifteen land usage, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning, the St. Joseph County Code as amended for properties located at one eight six four four Cleveland Road five three zero six two and five three one eight four bracket firm court, from our single-family district to our two residential district, Petitioners Four Horseman Ventures LLC, and Lynn Leoni and Michael.
Bill number twenty-six eighteen is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda is resolution, bill number twenty-three eighteen. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Bill twenty-three eighteen. Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council honoring and congratulating John J T in the Morning Thompson on his retirement from WSBT Radio.
Thank you. This resolution is from the St. Joseph County Council, but to help us recognize their longtime friend and colleague we have with us this meeting this evening, Mr. Bob Montgomery, formerly of WSBT Radio, currently of WSBT First Thing in the Morning.
And Mr. Jack Riker from Sunny One Oh One to read the resolution.
President Morton, thank you very much, council.
Was that who that is, J T?
I think so.
I thought that was Judge Joe Brown.
And we begin. Whereas, shall I start? Whereas John Thompson was born in New Jersey in nineteen hundred and grew up in the northeastern United States, mostly in the Massachusetts area, listening to the Boston radio stations, especially W B Z. That inspired him to both go into broadcasting and become a Boston Red Sox fan.
And whereas John, with no H, graduated high school and went to broadcasting school in the shadow of Fenway Park, he obtained his first radio position in nineteen seventy-one at a station in New Hampshire, although he did work at stations in Massachusetts, Colorado, Pennsylvania. Evidently, this man couldn't keep a job. What were you doing in the seventies? I know what you were doing. Before finally landing for good in nineteen seventy-five at WSBT in South Bend, where a part-time disc jockey was on Hickory Road screaming out Ted Nugent songs on W R B R, but I digress.
Whereas, John's morning radio career at WSBT evolved. He became known as J T in the Morning, and his show offered a variety of music, including when I started in the early nineteen nineties, there was mostly talk, it was mostly news, it was a little bit of music, including the songs that my wife called the J T Six because he only had about twenty minutes to get the songs in, and this was the highlight of one of the J T Six. And that was always my cue that the news was over, because we were riding in a beautiful balloon from that point forward.
You were a rocker.
He was. That was in the early nineteen nineties.
Yeah.
The song was from the sixties?
Something like that. Yes.
So, John also had talk, occasional humor, in quotation marks, contests oftentimes for fundraising purposes as well on a serious side, and other good works in the community for the benefit of this contest winners and his listeners. And?
Whereas, in addition to his radio career as a popular morning DJ at WSBT, John also in nineteen ninety-seven became the public address announcer for the Notre Dame marching band. I know this because he says his name fifty times during the performances. I'm just kidding.
And your announcer.
And I'm John Thompson.
Right.
And Notre Dame football games, and in twenty-fifteen for the South Bend Cubs on weekends and Mondays. Do you want to explain?
Monday, Monday is the first day of the week typically, when most people would work, not all, most people, occasionally. Also, whereas, John has also contributed to the local sports scene as an umpire. Would you like to borrow these?
You already have some.
Got that. Also for many high school and college baseball games, and even an occasional South Bend Cubs game.
Whereas, John has been an integral part of the Michiana community for forty-two years and has enjoyed being the bright good morning voice for Michiana for his entire WSBT career. And?
Whereas, on the occasion of his retirement from the airwaves at WSBT, the St. Joseph County Council is proud to recognize John Thompson for his many contributions and the talents in the Michiana community, including national and local charities, and wishes to specifically thank him for his many years of service through J T in the Morning.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that, on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and the St. Joseph County Council, we proudly and publicly recognize and thank John J T Thompson for his numerous contributions to our community, including his many sports-related and fundraising endeavors, and his daily morning wake-up calls to his loyal radio audience.
And we wish J T, and especially Marilyn, because he's going to be home a lot, for that we apologize, much health and happiness in John's retirement, and enjoy many hours of travel to see their children and grandchildren residing in various parts of the country, along with numerous trips to historic sites around the country and elsewhere on which they plan to embark in their leisure time.
Passed and adopted this tenth day of April twenty-eighteen, resolution, J T, you know, a lot of famous people in this world never had a resolution. Bob Hope never had a resolution. Flip Wilson never had a resolution. Red Buttons never had a resolution, but you do, J T, and you deserve it. Congratulations.
I have nothing else.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I should have brought my sunglasses because they would cut down on the glare. I didn't know.
Wow, wow. I've got to get up in a few hours. I don't need this.
Thank you for allowing me just a moment of your time. I would like to say that John Thompson made it look easy. As WSBT radios J T in the Morning for forty-two years, he helped all of us kickstart our mornings. I can't tell you how many people have told me that they miss getting up with John Thompson, and I'm saying it's a delight for me to get up with John Thompson now, but John has been our community's quintessential next-door neighbor, making sure his listeners were kept informed about community events, the latest news, and everything in between. He's been our community's favorite shirt-tail relative, always ready to be corny, without ever willing to be rude. He's been our community's loyal friend, guiding us through dangerous weather, potholes galore, sorry, and unfavorable football scores. And during those treacherous early hours of nine eleven, his and his partner, Bob Montgomery's steady voices, were there. John Thompson thought it was a privilege to talk to his listeners every morning. For their time, he gave the best of who he was each day. For their time, he showed his respect in every way. For their time, he asked only that we be kind, give generously to our community's concerns, and not take ourselves too seriously. He urged us all to be better together than any one of us could be by ourselves. And he made it look easy. Each time we tuned into his show, he helped us forget our troubles, even if for just a short while. And he shared his joys too, including falling in love. John Thompson made it look easy. For forty-two years, his radio show has been one of the many things that makes our community a good one. We may not again see the likes of J T in the Morning, but we're all the better for his time on the air, and we're all the happier for the moments he has shared with us. Thank you.
Now I know who my agent should be. Thanks to my good friends, Bob Montgomery and Jack Riker, fellow broadcasters for being here. Thank you for this award and this special moment. It's very much unexpected, probably undeserved, but greatly appreciated nonetheless. Forty-two years on the air, which certainly proves one thing, that Abe Lincoln was wrong. You can fool all the people all the time. I appreciate this award, this award very much, and others that I have received recently and throughout my career. And as wonderful as it is, it wouldn't mean nearly as much if I hadn't been able to share them with this lovely lady right here. So many people go through life without getting to meet the one person they were truly meant to love, and the rest of us are just lucky in that regard, and I am certainly in that category. Forty-two years, same station, same time slot, that's a lot of alarm clocks. And I probably have ties that are older than many of you, not to mention a leisure suit and a Nehru jacket or two. As Marilyn can tell you, throwing things away is not part of my DNA, but now with some extra time, perhaps I can get some of that done. And speaking of alarm clocks, a friend of mine, a former maintenance chief at the Indiana Toll Road, Pat Condon, has promised me that whenever I retired, whenever I'm ready, he'll let me run over an alarm clock with one of his giant paving machines. And I'm going to do it. I look forward to that. There have been certain indications through the years that the years are going by, and some of them have revolved around my being involved in baseball umpiring at various levels from Little League, high school, college, and even on occasion with the South Bend Cubs. And a few of those years, I was fortunate to be partnered with one of the esteemed members of the council, Mr. Robert Kroschinsky. Bobby, we had some great time, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
And one of those stories from East Side Little League, a fellow of about thirty or thirty-five, came up to me not long ago, and he said, "Don't I know you from East Side?" And I said, "Possibly. Have I umpired some of your son's games?" And he said, "No, you umpired some of my games." True story. And another one, more recently, when I was still on the air, I was doing a morning show remote at a local Martin supermarket, and a very attractive young lady came up to me during a break, and she was talking to me, and the more she talked to me, the more uncomfortable I got, because it appeared as though she were flirting with me. And finally, she said, "Are you married?" And I said, "Yes, I am. I have a beautiful wife and children and a number of grandchildren." And she said, "Oh, darn, I was hoping you could meet my mother." So certainly that perhaps put it in perspective. But it's true, forty-two years, and a lot of things have happened. I've done a lot and seen a lot, and I've put some age on, but please, age is just a number. It's just a state of mind. It's however you feel, and I feel good. So please remember the words of Thomas Jefferson, who said, "Do not judge a man by his age, but by the quality of his work." And when he told me that, I thought, "Here's a smarter man, a brilliant man." But I thank you so much for this special evening and this award. Jack, Bob, Babe, thank you so much for being here and for your support. It means a lot to me. It's something I'll never forget, and I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you so much.
Is there a second? Motion to pass bill number twenty-three eighteen was made by Councilman McKeel, who was seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any further comments from any council member on twenty-three eighteen?
Mr. Morton.
Mr. Kozinski?
I'd like to make a couple of comments here in regards to J T in the Morning. John, it's been a pleasure working with you on the baseball field, but it's also been a pleasure for what you have done, not only for me, especially when I was highway commissioner for seventeen years, and you were very important to call me to educate the citizens of St. Joe County in regards to road conditions or whatever was happening out there on the roads of St. Joe County, and I appreciate that. But if I could tell a story about umpire, J T just told a couple, but I can remember J T and I walking off the game one day, ice game, and gentleman up in the stands looked down at me, and he says, "Son, you did a great job at the game today." He says, "How long you been working with your dad?" And I said, "Well, sir, he's not my dad, but he's a very good friend, and we've had many, 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 been many, many hours on the baseball field, not only at Notre Dame, but not only South Bend Cubs, but the South Bend Civil Hogs back then, and many state finals in regards to Legion and various levels I've educated, and I appreciate every minute of the time that we spent together, even though you cost me two knee replacements." And thank you again.
Mr. Tanzret?
I just wanted to comment, Mr. Morton, it's unfortunate that we're here having to recognize you because you're no longer on the air, but it was so reassuring for me these last couple of messages to hear you speak again, J T, because your voice is recognizable and it's a part of the fabric of our community that's been here for a long time. I quit getting Notre Dame season football tickets years ago when the price got a little too more than I could afford, so now I'm going to have to probably figure out a way to get football tickets again so I can hear your voice again at halftime announcing the margin behind you. But it's been a pleasure having you as part of this community and the made contributions you've made, and just, again, comforting hearing your voice in here tonight, telling a few stories you've told. We wish you much happiness and good health in the future.
Any further comments from council?
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by sending aye on the passing of resolution twenty-three eighteen.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Let the record show that bill number twenty-three eighteen, in honor of J T, was passed unanimously by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you, J T. Thank you. All fiscal matters issues were heard and discussed at our March 27th committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. May I have a motion on Bill Number 2218? Do I hear a second? A motion to pass Bill Number 2218 was made by Councilman Nolan, and was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from council on 2218? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Mr. Morton? Yes.
Mr. Delonge?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzright? Yes. Mr. McHale?
Aye.
And Mr. Root?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 2218 was passed by a unanimous vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill under land use, Bill Number 15-18?
Bill Number 15-18, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, Land Usage Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code, as amended, located at State Road 23, for our single-family district B, business district, our single-family district to be business district. Petitioners Harold and Lumber.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill Number 15-18 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan.
Good evening. I'm Jordan White with the Area Plan Commission. Offices on 11th floor of this building.
Can you speak a little bit, sir?
Yes, sorry. The petitioner is requesting a zone change. The area outlined and read there, from our single-family district to be business district. Across State Road 23 to the north are parcel zone O office, B business, OB office buffer, and our single-family districts. To the east are single-family homes, zoned OB office buffer district, and our single-family district. To the south are single-family homes, zoned our single-family district. And in Mishawaka there to the southwest is the Village of Arborwood Senior Community. To the west is a commercial business, Zone B Business District. On site is currently a single-family home with a detached garage. And here's the area looking down 23. The site plan shows that the structures will be removed, and a new office building will be constructed in a paved parking lot. The southern portion of the parcel will remain wooded. This comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. Resizing the site to be business district would complement the current trends and mixture of uses along State Road 23. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council for area plan? Thank you. Petitioner? Please state your name and address. For the record, you have five minutes with the council.
Okay, thank you. Dustin Brown. I'm going to be the owner and developer of the site. And basically, what you see in the site right now, we are presenting to have office, professional office space. So, for instance, right now, we have a few people that we're talking to as far as chiropractor, dentist. So we're just using this as like an upscale business office section that we're doing there in that space. We've got quite a bit of land. We've already done the studies as far as the retention behind us. It creates a really nice area for all of our tenants and what they're going to be looking upon behind the building. And again, it matches what kind of goes down 23 right there, next to us, being business and commercial as well. The sites that are to the east of us at this point, the office buffer right there, residential, those are for sale right now, you know, promoting commercial potential space there. And we already have a few tenants that are already on board for this area. So again, more of the professional office space is what we're going for here, not retail.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from council for petitioner? Mr. Tanzright?
Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
What is your, I know you're pulling on your stage this time, huh? What are your finishings next year, and do you have a start here?
Yes, we're going through that right now. So we're going back and forth on, obviously, it's going to be some type of masonry as far as, you know, whether we're going to use some stucco on the building. Right now, we're leaning towards using some actual, they're basically Masonite panels, is what it looks like, with stone down below on the bottom side. And what that creates is, again, a more professional office space, medical-looking facility is what we're going for. So again, not the run-of-the-mill on purpose, just standard retail space that you kind of see popping up here and there. We're trying to make this different on purpose.
Have you given any thought to the portions not facing the public entryways, the backup structure, the part of the structure facing the front? Will it be given the same attention as the side?
Yeah, so what's different about this space in particular to other commercial spaces is around the backside of this building, again, we are looking upon a retention area, so no one can be building beside us to the west and also behind us, which actually is really nice. So we're going to have a lot of windows. Again, if we're trying to use this more towards medical space and medical use, all the patient offices, for instance, will have windows along that whole side. So it will be definitely different. I mean, it's going to match the same material that we're doing on the front. We're not going to, you know, dumb it down on the backside to make it look less appealing. But we're going to have lots of windows, which would be very different, because most of the commercial spaces that we do on the backside, as you guys are probably well aware, they're just, you know, flat, boring block spaces. And so, yeah, it will match the building. And like I said, right now, we're just trying to figure out exactly what that looks like. We're not done with the design plans right now 100%, but we do want to make this look different, make it look, you know, very standing out, very different for our clients.
Where is your construction team at?
Well, yeah, so obviously, we're to this stage right now. I mean, we would love to be, you know, moving earth, you know, in the next month or two here. So it is very quick. The reason is because of some of these doctors that have already signed on. One of them has to be in, you know, relatively end of this year, December, January timeframe, which means, you know, on a six-month timetable, we have to get rolling on it pretty quick.
Sure you're aware of the kind of on-site project a little bit to the west? Could you explain it, please?
Yeah, that's definitely interesting, yeah.
Just like to see if you're going on, if you're willing to get it done.
I can guarantee you won't have the same problem. Yeah, and that's the big thing, is because we have tenant timelines and tables, we want to get this moving.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council for petitioner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
We will now open public hearing on 15-18. Do I, does anyone wish to address the council in favor of 15-18? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of Bill 15-18? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill? Second. Motion to pass Bill Number 15-18 was made by Councilman Nolan, and was seconded by Councilwoman McHale. Any further comments on this bill?
Yeah.
Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton? Yes.
Mr. Delonge?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzright?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
The order is passed as eight to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 15-18 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 21-18?
Bill Number 21-18, ordinance approving the rule of the Human Rights Ordinance, near local agreement. Petitioner Raphael Morton and Diana Hill.
Mr. McHale, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill Number 21-18 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hess?
Yes, this bill is really to extend the interlocal agreement that we entered into last November, so that there were no complaints from other Human Rights Ordinance could be heard here in St. Joseph County, which is very helpful. So it's important that we keep this, so we are just extending it beyond the May deadline to the end of the year. And through the end of the year, there is no additional cost to the county.
Thank you. Any questions from council for petitioner? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 21-18. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
And Penny Hughes, Chair of the Human Rights Commission, and I just want to thank you for doing this. It's long overdue. We've been able to hear many new cases that we had to say, "Sorry, we can't help you" before. So we really appreciate it, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this? Hearing none, closed public hearing on Bill 21-18. Do I hear a motion? Hear a second. Motion to pass Bill Number 21-18 was made by Councilman McHale Tanzright. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on 21-18? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Delonge?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzright?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
The order is passed as eight to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 21-18 was passed by a unanimous vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 18-18?
Bill Number 18-18, ordinance amending ordinance 16-17, the saving in ordinance establishing salaries fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2018.
Mr. McHale, committee report, please. Please read the next bill, Bill Number 18-18?
Bill Number 18-18, ordinance amending ordinance 16-17, the saving in ordinance establishing salaries fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2018.
Mr. McHale, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill Number 18-18 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. John Antonucci, Director of Emergency Management Agency of St. Joseph County. Offices at 1222 South Michigan Street. We have come to the council to request the salary amendment. We have a part-time coordinator of special projects, and we are asking to be able to add an additional four hours to his salary so that we can have him in the office three full days during the week.
Thank you. Any questions from council for petitioner? Thank you, sir. We will now open a public hearing on Bill 18-18. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this? Hearing none, closed public hearing on Bill 18-18. Do I hear a motion? Motion to pass Bill Number 18-18 was made by Councilman Nolan, and was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzright?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 18-18 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Next on the agenda is new business. Hearing none, next on the agenda, it's privileged of the floor, limited to three minutes on any item not on tonight's agenda. Next is a motion to adjourn. Hear a second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need to adjourn. Thank you very much.